Welcome, everyone, to the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, July 12. If you would all please join me in place. I start with a motion, please, to approve the agenda. Mike, second. And on favor, six oh. Privilege of the floor, we do have one person for privilege of the floor, Mr. Bardine. Privilege of the floor, we have thirty minutes allocated in each meeting for Board of Education questions, comments. During this time, residents of the district may address the board. Remarks should be limited to five minutes or less. The board will listen to input but will not respond except to refer any specific concerns to superintendent for follow up. Questions should be answered within a week if possible. Speaker should speak their name, address, and phone number so the district can record this. Ms. Bardine, please.
My name is Donald Bardine. I live at Six Ridge Meadows Drive in Spencerport, New York. My phone number is five eight five. Five eight five four one four nine nine seven. These are pretty basic questions. One first, the first question is what is the seating capacity of the room used for our school board? It's just this room, there was a seating capacity. And what is the procedure for asking for a change in venue to accommodate community members if this anticipated exceed seating capacity above? Concerning the subject of bias, is skin color used in analysis of this subject? And how are current events covered in the classroom? In the interest of transparency, are there lesson plans or publications used for current events that are available to residents of the school district? That's some of my questions, I have a few more to ask. Big comments. I know past times here at your board meetings. I appreciate that. And I can, sometimes there's tension, sometimes there's not. We don't have any back and forth discussions. I'm not going to be able to do the whole process, as you know, and that's another story. But one of the things I did tonight when I came here early, I had a little bit of time before I started your organizational meeting. And if I go a while or five minutes, please allow me to just see this off the cuff. But I was wandering around, I looked at all the signs that you have regarding attitude, and they're phenomenal. If you've seen me here early, come board meeting, taking pictures of them, I'm taking pictures of them, I want to get them. If someone could respond to me and maybe tell me where I can put those up online or something, that'd be great, say you take a lot of pictures. But what I'm trying to get to here is I think there's a lot of common ground here. The first time I ever spoke at these board meetings, one of the things I tried to do was initiate things that we had an kind of agreement about, both residents and school board members and the community. And I won't get into the details on that, but it went a lot of different directions for a lot of different reasons. I still believe, I was sitting here, it was just going through my head, I was looking around with all the people that involve the administration, I've got a couple of them, and the board members and stuff. We're all in this process together. And I don't think, I don't have any animosity against anyone sitting here, anyone in the community that I'm aware of. And I do know this, there's a lot of fundamental differences between what I personally believe and maybe what the board believes, and that's what I'm trying to work on. So sometimes I ask tough questions or ask questions or make somebody uncomfortable, it was not intended for any other reason that I'm trying to accomplish a purpose, I played out in other meetings. Now, I'll be back involved. One of the things I will say to you as a board, I think I should say, here's your first name, sir.
That's fine.
Disrespect, it's easily tied, and you're just trying to pronounce his last name, it's a mess up, I'm sure. But one of the things I'd like to see is somehow you as a board and we as a community could have some kind of open forum meeting to discuss some different subjects at some point in time, other than the five minutes, and I go away, you respond to me privately. It's a different way of running things. I'm sorry, but anyway, I've given you enough of your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bardine. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Obviously, there aren't students right now, so I'll explain what that is. More your motion, second, anyone? Lee. All in favor? Board of Education. My, tomorrow is our interview panel for the Director of Security, so I'll be, I'll be sitting in on that. Beyond that, Amy Thomas did take over as the new executive director of MCSBA and is already making some inroads on fixing the website, making new communication channels for members to be able to collaborate a little bit better. And I'm really excited about what she's going to bring to the position. I think that the association, which is already a very good one, is going to be even better. So it should be, should be fun to watch what happens over the next few months, yeah.
So Amy and I grew up together, I'm with Kate, we got degrees together, she's an eighty-four graduate.
Amy, Amy West.
Amy West, yeah.
Amy West is the new president.
Oh, I'm sorry, you don't think, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and so, yeah, we have two Amys, very confusing, every time you do emails.
Yes.
But no, and Amy West.
Right.
From Honey, Honey Oil Falls, Lima, just took over as president, and yeah, Dave and her.
Her name was.
Yeah, she, but she's going to be great too, I think, and we've got Matt, Metzger from West, East, no, West around Quay, he's going to be the vice president. Also, wicked sharp dude, and he was on, he was chair of the Legislative Committee for the past couple of years, and very sharp. So I think that the association is in good hands, so anyway. So that opened up, any, if anybody else got stuff? All right.
Well, I'd like to invite Jonathan and Darren up. We do have some strategic partners here with us tonight, and I'll also ask Darren and Jonathan to introduce them. We wanted to provide the Board of Education an update on our capital improvement project, our planning and our conversations that we've been having. And we're going to be outlining for you in this presentation some of our future work and your involvement as a board in the upcoming months.
Again. Sir? All right. All right, thank you for having us again regarding, this time regarding capital project planning. As you remember, I think I started in two thousand seventeen, one of the first major tasks I had was to co-chair the last Facilities Task Force with Rick, wherein we essentially pulled together the two thousand twenty-two capital project. This one will probably be dubbed the two thousand twenty-two capital project, so I mean, we stick with our timelines and have the vote in December. That's where that number comes from at this point. But it really is our two thousand twenty-two capital project Facilities Task Force. First off, just quick introductions, we have our partners with us, and I think, maybe introduce yourselves. Start with Ashton McGrath, who is new to the district.
My name is Nick Sigurali, Principal of Ashton McGrath. And I'm an associate principal and project manager.
Jason Hannan, I am with Camps Construction Manager.
Aaron McDonald with Amy Engineering.
Thank you. So yes, Ashton McGrath is new to the district, so we're working to incorporate them into this project, that they give us a lot of good advice with respect to how we're working through the discussion with our Facilities Task Force, as well as leading towards our next project, which I'm going to get into in this presentation, I actually kind of turned it over to Kristen for that. But this is going to give you an overview of what we've been doing, how we got here with respect to both finances, as well as what our infrastructure needs are, the future planning for the district, which Kristen's going to touch on, an update with respect to what the task force has been doing, since there are some of you who have not been able to attend the meetings. We have a timeline that kind of shows the timelines of how these things are going to interplay. And then just going, switching back to the task force, what we're working on now, what's upcoming, and what you're going to see in the, in the, in the near future, if you will. So why are we doing a project? For those of you, obviously, who've been doing the tours through the buildings, you've seen a number of things, whether it was with our previous Director of Facilities, Mr. Drake, or with Mr. Price here. There are a number of items in the buildings that really need to be touched on. But when it comes to the capital projects, some of those are really what we have called infrastructure repairs, big things, big ticket items, low wow factor. You can see a picture there of Benchmark Pro, Benchmark Two Thousand boilers. We have a number of boilers all replaced in two thousand three, almost all of them. Maybe one or two that has been replaced since then. But we have to look at each of those because those are coming up on their warranty. ME Engineering is helping us look at those and make decisions. But we also have a budget opportunity, and this is where we, I think there was a study session with the board where our financial advisors, BPD, were here to talk about the finances, how we can generate, regenerate, but how the money will work with respect to financing this project, the two thousand twenty-two project, and how we can try and make that happen without a tax impact. So starting off with the infrastructure needs. So when we were pulling together this project, we knew there were a number of large scope items. And having been through the last one, it's, it was a question for the board and everyone on the task force is how are we going to balance those needs with what the buildings want, what operations need, what are the program needs? How do we help support the educational program for the students? Well, what we are working on now is kind of a split with the infrastructure items really taking the lead in our current Facilities Task Force, and a number of the programmatic items that we're getting from the buildings may just kind of roll into that next project. Because as Kristen will touch on, when we get to working with Ashley McGrath for, for the long-term planning, those items will really kind of dovetail into that so that we know how they're going to fit into the overall plan for the district. As I said before, the low wow factor, that's a photo of the Cosgrove roof as it was getting repaired after the last storm, April. That's, that was on the day, one of the days that it was getting repaired. But the rest of the roof still needs to be repaired. So there's items all over the district that need to be touched in somehow, but we need a process to help narrow that down. That's Spencerport, that's been through the process that we call the Facilities Task Force. The twenty-four, twenty-five budget, so the twenty-four, twenty-five budget is, presents an opportunity for us to work on a capital project now so that the debt starts hitting in that year and fitting into the budget for that year. So, quick refresher for those of you who don't know, the budget includes the debt service payment on the bonds that we borrowed to finance this project, as well as other projects. It also includes bonds for buses and large, large mega items really for the capital project. But we receive state building aid to offset the capital project costs. Now, the difference between the debt service payments and the state building aid is called the local share. That is the term that our partners will use when we're trying to determine, especially BPD, when we're trying to determine the impact on the taxpayer. In this case, we're looking for, we are moving forward towards, I'm confused my words carefully, moving towards a zero impact with the local share. The local share does impact exclusions related to the tax cap calculation. And in twenty-four, twenty-five, there's a variance essentially in the debt service, which would allow us to fit this project in to help balance that out. I'll show you from two different directions with this. So it's actually kind of, sorry, apologize, it's kind of hard to see. So here in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, there's a large drop, it goes from two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So that swing right there is a change in the debt service. Now, these numbers are negative because right now we're bringing in more state aid than we're paying on the bonds. So that switch right there will then allow us to fit this project financing into that so that we level out the debt service payments, if you will, on an annualized basis. So in this graph, more of a visual representation, you can see, once we get to twenty-four, twenty-five, there's this gap right here. That gap is what allows us to put forth a project that, in our estimation right now, has a zero impact because it then brings up the payments to a level, a level state, which Rick had always reminded me that he doesn't want to see peaks and valleys with respect to changes in those payments. So keeping that level is very good for the budget and allows for good planning from a long-term perspective of the district. Now, tax cap exclusions, these are two graphs that you may have seen before. I think we've used them in our first meeting of the Facilities Task Force. But you have the tax cap calculations up here, kind of forecast forward for a few years. Then at the bottom, which is circled right here, you can see that there is a small impact. When the project goes in, the tax cap goes to four point two eight, but essentially after that, it becomes very minimal. That minimal change is again what is kind of just the fluctuation as we level out those debts.
And I don't know if this is a question for you or.
Oh, I'm gonna, we'll see.
So, given what we're going through in terms of inflation right now, so how much of that is being factored into these projections right now? Given the big changes we've seen over the past six to eight months?
I'm going to answer two for, one is there's part of the eight steps in calculating that, you can only go up to two percent of the CPI, okay, so that's one piece of the tax cap. I think the other is really built into what, what can we do within the project? Okay, which is probably more a question for
Yeah, I mean, because, and you guys jump in anytime. Given material costs and where those things have been headed over the past year, two years, I mean, is, are we projecting properly for that?
So, yeah, that's a question for me. So, campus, we bid out about nineteen projects every single year, which allows us to use real market data for that year when creating our conceptual budgets. And then within our conceptual budgets such as this, we identify an escalation factor. That escalation factor for this project is twenty percent that we're identifying to carry us through construction. So throughout design, we also have the design contingency for any unproceeds that come up, you know, during that design process investigation. So that when we go out to bid, we're having those two additional add-ons on today's dollars of construction to make sure that when we bid the project out, we have enough funds available to bid the project out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm not sure how to move that, so how much can we afford without impacting the budget? That's the real question, that's what puts us at the level which maintains the debt service as he has calculated for us. Right now, that puts us at eighteen point eight five million dollars. But then you start going moving into what Jason was talking about, you have the financial planning contingency, construction contingency, but you also have incidental costs. Each of those kind of comes off the top. We've got to maintain that kind of, almost, I won't use the word reserve, but a little bank of money there. A buffer, yeah, a buffer for that project, leaving us, right now, an estimated construction cost of around thirteen point six million dollars. Now, there is some play with that, of course, depending on the escalation charges, escalation costs. But even in the last project, we are right now in the third phase of the two thousand eighteen project. The bids came back favorably in the first phase, we were looking over the second, the bids came back favorably. And we continue to process and use the money up that the voters did approve, and each time hitting a little more scope that came out of the Facilities Task Force. Of course, I hope would be that we can continue to do that. We use the Facilities Task Force now to help narrow down the priorities and get some of that information so that when hopefully do have a little bit of that leeway, that buffer left, that we can have accomplished some more work in line with what the Facilities Task Force was putting out. Of course, given, you know, there may be some priority changes because that could be five years from now. By the time, as it is right now, four years later than the voters approved the two thousand eighteen project. So, Task Force Committee Charge, so taking us back to the Task Force, if you remember, the board did approve the charge for the Task Force. And just kind of touching on it, it's finding the priorities and identified in the two thousand twenty Building Condition Survey that was completed by our architect, and that was the initial basis for our Task Force to look at the information, what is the condition of our buildings? But also then asking, what are the existing and future programmatic space requirements? How does that fit in? What are the building interests? How do we incorporate all of those interests into helping to determine the scope?
So, Building Condition Survey is every five years.
Every five years, yes. Yeah, we, it was every five years, and everybody had to have it done at the exact same time. Then they switched it to a rotation where a percentage gets done every year, we were just in the first year. So that allowed us the quick assessment of what we had completed actually during COVID, but drove with a lot of meetings with our architects and our principals and individuals around the district to get an assessment of where the conditions are. So our Facilities Task Force, so far, we've met four times, we've discussed a number of things, safety and security, the project financing, similar to what we talked about here, the Building Condition Survey, the infrastructure scope that, well, that we and Darren have put forth as kind of some of our priorities, but operational needs, and then we're also trying to elicit some building interest in what their priorities are. Using various methods, group work surveys, open discussion, reflection activities. I have here, this is an example of one of the activities we did with the group, it's a prioritization survey. After having discussions with the group, we had broken the infrastructure down into five categories. It's on this page with some dollar values on the right there, but it's really roofing, HVAC, roadways, fire alarms, and secure entrances. In this survey, it was by large group tables, and a number of buildings, two buildings were sitting together with each other each time. But what's telling about this survey is every single table put secure entrances first. Every group, every conversation has focused on secure entrances as their number one priority. There were differences between the buildings on roofing and paving, you know. One of the pictures we saw was from the Burnaby bus, holes, holes that need to be fixed. Recent false alarms, high school, you know, fire alarms, they didn't actually write that really high.
Okay, I'm gonna.
In comparison to.
Do you mind if I jump in, just to say one thing to those who aren't there? I do think that it's important to note that, so everybody's sitting by kind of what your, where your priority would be. So like, you know, I'm a representative for Mon, I'm sitting at one stable. And I do think that each group did a really remarkable job of saying, like, you know, like at Mon's paving was just done recently. So that may not be a priority for Mon, but we do recognize that it's a priority at other buildings. And I do think that all the groups did a really great job of kind of saying, like, if you think of the high school, the fire alarm's going off, right, we could stand outside, and they still put it last. So, because they recognize that they may be not be top priority for, as a district. So some of those differences will be because that wasn't a problem at Mon, you know what I mean, or Burnaby or Calview. But I do think overall, they took into account that every person's piece of the, they weren't just advocating for their own space. And I would say that was true of the task force in general.
And we're feeling that from other reflection activities, there's a lot of focus on, yes, secure entrances rises to the top in every survey and every metric that we've done with them, but when you get to that other information, there is a lot of good feedback from the group towards their priorities, initiatives that we can work on in the future, and good information for Ashley McGrath to use as we move forward towards the next stage of planning for the district.
I'm going to play devil's advocate, and really probably get but when we say secure entrances, right now, we're, we have locked entrances to every doorway, so. And you can't get through them without a card, or without buzzing in and giving, you know, ask for identification and that sort of thing. Is it so much secure entrances or?
My question is that what they're trying to create is a situation where you have a corral, an industrial vestibule so that you make it through one door, then you're guarded, and then you make it into that way. And the person likely, Karidoo, like, I'm on, was on the other side of a plexi or.
Right, yeah, and I get that, I just, is that going to add, and I'll clarify from your experience, is that adding significantly to our security posture, or is it just a more of a, it feels good to have an extra door there?
Well, I think it feels good, but I think it adds a significant amount of security to every door.
Okay.
Gary, I'm going to say that I asked a very similar question, this is my feeling about it, like, if you have locked doors, right? Your lock, if you, if you're buzzing people in, anyway, right? If somebody locks your door and you're just hitting the buzzer, people are coming in, right? If you have a locked entry, nobody should be able to enter. So even if you have two doors, if it's only as good as the system that's in place.
The process in place to.
Right, but this, what this does do is allow somebody to enter one space, then check ID. Right now, we don't check ID until they're already in our building. So even though, like, you may say with it, but, you know, I mean, I'm honestly, because somebody a worker bed coming in, okay, like, if they're causing trouble, you wouldn't hit buzzer, but I think it gives that, that time space, but I guess I was with you too, because I was thinking to myself, well.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We've had similar questions even when we implemented the raptor system a couple of years prior to COVID.
Yeah. You're in with us already before you're getting out there.
You are. But we, right now, we have Dan Donovan from Ashley McGrath helping us, we're meeting with principals, he's working on design plans and and we're talking through, we've met a couple of times just to talk about high schools out there. You know, that is complicated when you start talking about the number of students who can kind of slide in.
Yeah.
And holding the door at the way the lobby is designed, it's really not meant for that, you know. But, so we're talking for each of the entrances, and thanks to Darren's input, we're trying to build in at least a, you know, three to five person, probably five person women area in each of those spaces so that we can have those interactions, the ID checking, establish the reason why the individual is there, without them getting past that next level. And so.
That's a, it's a technical side of this, but the support, being able to, yeah, you're already in raptor system, you get to come in. You're not, so now we have to do the raptor system trouble while you're still on the lock side of the door.
Yes, we have, we had, we still have to, if Dan brings that up all the time, we still have to talk to some of the and this is a finishing, but the type of products that we're going to use for the walls and the windows and all of those, so that we can maintain safety of our greeters while, while making those interviews with, with the visitors who are coming in.
Yeah.
So it would allow all of that to happen before entering the main part of the building. So while this says secure, it says, I think Leah said, it is a vestibule type entrance that we're looking at.
But hard.
Just, we still have to have those discussions to what level?
Just throwing out there, other district that I'm aware of has gone through this process, and they're on the other side of it now. And I'll just say, something that they overlook that I sincerely hope we don't overlook is the environment inside that vestibule where the person actually sits behind the desk and goes through raptor and everything in that process. Sometimes that stuff gets neglected or has been neglected, I've seen examples of it. And the poor person that's going through the process, basically, the gatekeeper, is either freezing or frightened.
Right.
So please, please be cognizant of that when you come to design.
And, and we will, we've talked about Dan with that, and I'm, I want to assume, but campus is, I'm sure, pricing the end certain, once we narrow down the And I'm, I want to assume, but campus is, I'm sure pricing and certain, once we narrow down the scope of making each of those entrances. Or rather each of the greeter stations, if you will. Some may be open to the environment, thus allow more travel. Some already have some heaters in place. Others like Canal View may require addition to make that happen because of the design of the entrance. That could be our largest expense, if you will, but it's not gonna blow that. Because it requires a foundation and the, and HVAC and whatever else comes with all of that. That is being designed by Dan now and then will be priced by campus so that we can bring that back to the facility task force. And I think that brings me to this slide with our infrastructure need, oh, sorry.
So I, I understand the spirit of what we're doing to have a security point for front of each building, if you will, right? So if I just pick on a high school for a second, in the morning, in the morning at arrival, kids come in through multiple points in the building, is that correct? Or just through the front door?
The doors that they are coming through are monitored. There's usually when they come in through the, by the east gym, there's an assistant principal there.
Okay, got it.
If they're coming in the front, there's a greeter who's monitoring those individuals coming in.
So what I was thinking was, I mean, if there's multiple points of entry, what's happening, some suspect just to kind of sneak in, right? Go hide in the bathroom until the bell and then do their thing versus wait till eight thirty when everyone's sitting down, they try to go through the front door. But if you're saying allegedly at the high school, at the points of entry, you have an adult there, cat's coat is out, that's fine, you know? I'm not sure that, that's still a hundred percent safe and secure.
It's, it won't, I mean, here's the truth, right? I mean, I shouldn't be answering, answering this question, but I just, I look at it as like, those times are probably less than ideal if you're looking for perfect safety. Because those doors aren't going to be locked, they're not gonna be checking every student that walks through through a raptor system.
No, I mean, actually, you gotta get a thousand kids and, and I understand that. But the point is, is if you have breaches in the building, right? In theory, some of it somehow, put a hood on, space man.
I don't think secure entries are the end goal. This is just, this is one step.
I understand, but that's, that's what I'm saying.
There are certainly other avenues. Our old terrace survey certainly provided us with a lot of input on not just the secure entry minutes, but, but other areas. You have your secondary, so I think this is just one component of it. But yeah, we, we talk a lot, Jonathan and I talk a lot about the other, those other avenues that we need to focus on.
Good, and not to kick that horse, but you, you gotta think that it could happen. Someone could be very savvy, drop, you know, bend down, it can happen.
There's, there's not gonna be a hundred percent.
I mean, unless you have, there's just one door with, you know, that's what I'm saying. So if we spent X amount to make these vestibules, that's great, but I don't think a hundred percent solved the problem.
Yeah, more days probably, it's the balancing between building a prison and having a school. But just moving on from that, um, some schools are dabbling with facial recognition technology on cameras on looking at the doors coming in. That would be kind of an IT slash security thing. If it's not on your radar, it is on most schools radar nationally, there's companies doing it. And I definitely know someone works there, so it's not probably need to look.
Can you have those discussions here with our?
That include facial recognition?
So this chart right here, it totals fifty-five million dollars. This was the initial estimate, probably first, second meeting after things were narrowed, not at all. Okay, so this is where we started and we're using the facilities task force to help narrow this down and pick out these priorities. You know, when Darren helps identify seventeen million dollars of roofing, if we're looking at weeks at month. Versus what Dan had described as a recovery system at another building. I will get to some of our testing and our, in our ongoing work later, later in the presentation. Where we talk about how we also help narrow this down through the use of our professionals and some other vendors who are going to help bring that to a head. But we are using the facilities task force to touch on each of these areas in their importance as well as the impact on just their buildings. Thank you. At this point, it's my turn to turn it over to Kristen to talk a little bit about strategic planning. And how that infrastructure and then some of those programmatic items are going to lead us towards some good initiatives with the district.
So early on in the capital improvement project planning process, we recognized wanting to try and really take advantage of the financial opportunity we had. How do we create a capital improvement project and where are we going and where do we want to go instructionally? So I had shared a few meetings ago, our need and how we're moving forward in regards to our strategic planning process. So you know that we've started our process by having our thought exchange and really tapping into our community in regards to what we're doing well. Where we're going, where we need to go in the future and really starting to build that foundation. Because as we were speaking with our architects, many times they had asked, share with us your district plan. So we can start thinking about how to frame the master planning process. And so we're now in the place where we are developing that strategic plan. Just a reminder, as you know, we're going to be meeting in August collectively to really start that work. And we hope by the end of December, early January, that we will have a strategic plan in place. So with that strategic plan in place around January, it allows us then to start building upon the master planning process. For our capital improvement projects. And again, having identified where we want to go instructionally, how we want to utilize our space. That allows us to move into this master planning. So to review the timeline with you, again, right now, we're beginning our strategic planning process. We feel that that's going to be about a six month process. That brings us to around January of twenty twenty-three, where we start to kick off the master planning for our capital improvement project. That will be led by Ashley LeBraun, that's about an eighteen month process. We start, start to begin working with the board based on that master planning with a voter referendum. That we're anticipating the winter of twenty twenty-four. So you'll see that a few things are happening concurrently. So for this twenty twenty-two project, where we're at is we're giving you an update where our facilities task forces. We will talk about tonight, the State Environment Quality Review Act. We're looking to bring our financial partners back in September. So they can present the tax impact of this twenty twenty-two project. We would ask the board to adopt our secret resolution and propositions for a vote. For ultimately our voter referendum, excuse me, in December of twenty twenty-two.
So public hearing, are we actually thinking of doing an actual public hearing where we actually open up an auditorium and do things like that?
So this is our short term plan right now, leading us into December twenty-two. With the twenty-two, what we're calling the twenty-two capital improvement project. And again, the next project, another larger project aiming for winter of twenty-four.
So on the public hearing, is Ashley McGraw gonna help with the, with the, how that looks and feels? And what we need to be prepared for and all this stuff?
Yeah, as part of our, as part of the, you know, once you make a declaration to say, we're gonna, you know, have the vote on December, whatever, nine. We'll help you with, you know, save the data cards, social media posts, video if you needed it. Any drawings or graphic representation to help convey the message of what the product's about to your community.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the twenty twenty-two, these smaller, but your projects can be covered by the local share. So historically, we have gone out and just included that vote at budget time in May. So we're talking about this, there will be no, the local shares being covered by the district, but we're still gonna do that in December twenty-two.
Yes.
So and then the larger of the project, we won't be able to cover, or we wouldn't anticipate covering the local share. And that would draw the vote to save back.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I, I, some of the financials will depend on that master planning process, how things may need to be phased in, what's the ultimate goal? If there's, you know, multi layers that come with that, because once you start getting into larger projects, Darren and I have spoke a couple of times about how do you phase this in when you really only have two months of building? You know, there's a, there's a lot of steps that are going to go into that, that we have to rely on Ashley McGraw and campus and ME engineering to make all of that work fit properly. So our ongoing work, work right now, kind of behind the scenes of the facilities task force is testing. So some of our infrastructure priorities, roofing, we have scans that have been completed, we're waiting a report on that. Some, a couple have come back favorably. We have found a couple of, as we've talked about at none, you know, there's a couple of areas that might need to be addressed. We're gonna have some visual boiler assessments to help us assess which boilers we need to replace and what's the best plan for hitting on those, a, a number of those. Roadways and parking for samples, this will help us narrow down the scope. Do we need to do a full, what Kevin called a box out and bring it all the way down, take everything out and start over on the base? Or can we do what's called a mill and pave and just do the top layer? If the base is not good, then we have to go all the way down. And then secure entrances, Ashley McGraw is working on conceptual designs right now. Hopefully, we'll be able to have some of those priced out and the scope narrowed down, given the drawings that, that Ashley's gonna produce. A lot of good conversations with the principals about how we fit those into their building and how that works with the, their processes that the greeters follow. The seeker process, so the seeker is kind of the next thing that you're gonna see, it's gonna be processed by our partners and sent to the state. The seeker itself, seeker of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, had a review of the environmental impact of the project. In short, from what I'm hearing from our partner, if we're not disturbing soil that's already been disturbed, if we're not disturbing extra soil, we're building in addition. If we're building them all, you're gonna have a larger impact, you're gonna have a much harder seeker process. Based on what we're talking about from our scope, hitting infrastructure items, pavement that's already been paved, maybe adding some lighting to each of the pavement areas. We're gonna have what is likely gonna be classified as a type two action, the lower level, not the type one. There are some unclassifieds there that I didn't really want to get into, but Dan was providing me with information about how this, about the seeker process. But, and, and Dan can correct me on this, but in October, the board will approve the seeker determination. And we would essentially be designated as the lead agency, kind of taking responsibility through our partners to make sure that we maintain the level of impact that we said. Not going beyond the scope of the project that's been approved by S E B. And that is essentially what the board will be approving as one, as the next step in the process of getting us to the project. Did I cover that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So our upcoming work with our task force, narrowing down the scope based on the test results. Once we have those reports, we'll be able to trim things down. If we can use a roof recovery system, maybe that brings the price down, frees money up or something else. Then we have to have additional discussions with the, with the task force, yes.
So given that secure entrances was across the board, number one priority for all the building. Are those like the number one priority in this couple of work at this point in time or how is that?
Yes, when I talk about the infrastructure items, that's kind of the money that we have secondary to those secure entrances.
Okay.
Those secure entrances are being designed and once that scope, that'll give us kind of an estimate, one camp, once campus has a look at it. And then that's kind of locked in, I think, and I think that's the perspective we're taking.
Gary, one of the apps that we had of Ashley McGraw was in order to harden her security entrances. That they created designs that would be built upon. So anything that we're putting in or changing now, as we move forward with the master plan will be built upon. It's, we're not gonna secure, then wipe out and say, well, we want to change the entrance, you know, to Canal View, for example. So that was one of the tasks and that's why our architects and Darren and Jonathan have been meeting very frequently with the building principals. To make sure that we can harden, have a, have a starting developmental design that we're building upon in the next project as well.
Okay, so I'm not sure, I'm a little confused, but, so the hardened design will be done in this project, but just not further changed?
Because, yes, because we, for example, let's think about the high school. You know, there's, there's quite a bit that we need to think about, how we want to use the physical space in the high school and how that entrance might be. So in our design right now, we said, what do we need to do to harden that entrance? And then anything that we agree upon our design needs to be able to be built upon as we move towards, do other things. And move towards the larger master planning.
And that's, don't tell them all that, that's kind of why some of those programmatic, programmatic items and other interests may really be part of the master plan. Because how does that fit for the, for the entirety of the building? I don't know that we're at the point where we say every elementary school is the same, I really doubt it. But once we get through that, how do the changes in the lockers affect the overall, you know, ambiance of the school when you walk in there? How do we change the lobby? How do we fit for current staffing levels? How do we fit for our current needs? All of those were played into the master planning process, which was really, I mean, at least for some of us, that was one of the real aims during our interview process, our RFP process for, for our architects. So I think that is it. Any other questions with respect to the facilities task force or have our partners here regarding the project planning portion?
Just that, are we still on time? We're still looking at a December vote, a December vote, yes. I know we've had a little delay, I mean, not delay, but.
Yeah, it, it's really, because right now, it's because of getting the, the testing done. We started the testing process essentially when everybody's on vacation, you know? So every, so getting those vendors in line, we are still in line with our overall timeline because we ask them that every, every time, essentially. Because we don't want to, we don't want to be at the point where we just bring the facilities task force back in to just kind of have a, you know, twenty minute update. We want to be able to present in front of them, the prices, the estimates, the results of the tests and help narrow down that final scope. So the delays and, yeah, I know, I know, sending emails to everybody to say we're pushing it out a little bit more. But it, it really is about making sure we have those test results to help hold that scope together because.
Yeah, I wasn't so worried, I'm not so worried about the, that postponing of a meeting, I'm more worried, I just want to make sure that we're, we still have enough time, wiggle room built in to get to voters in December.
As Jonathan said, we literally asked that question every meeting that we have with our strategic partners. And, and yes, we're still in the timeframe that we've established to be able to have that vote. And so our next board meeting, when we present in September, we will really give you the details of the studies and the consensus. And hopefully the recommendation of the task force. And that will be in perfect timing with what we needed today.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming too, appreciate you being here.
Thank you guys.
Getting asked Jonathan to stay up if you're ready to roll into how this.
Yes. Alrighty, so policy review, I just left the labels as it was in the agenda. This is really hitting some of those policies that identified as needed to be brought back to the board either for, either for discussion or minor wording changes. Some of which were really just adding a couple of words, maybe adding a sentence to those. There was some discussion about the music instrument policy, which we'll get to. But with respect to, to just the first part of them, I almost really kind of need to go through individually to, to make sure that we're on the same page. Like eleven forty for principals for school board members, that was a discussion that we had last year. And it was a discussion about the board deleting the policy and working on your own document for, I, I don't know what you want to call it, principals code of conduct, whatever you want to call. I, I don't know what you want to call it, principals code of conduct, whatever you want to call it. I just, when we left that, at least my notes reflect that the board would still need, or needs to act to rescind policies. So we'll have a whole bunch that we do need to rescind. This is one of them I just thought would might be confirmation.
I just want to have, if I could, just jump in and stuff. So I know some of the districts around Monroe County do have like a code of conduct. And that they have this laid out of kind of how we're going to work as a, as a team. And everybody generally signs it at the organizational meeting. Obviously, we don't have that place right now. But is there an interest in me getting one of those or a couple of those and, and shooting them around the people? To see what we could incorporate for our own, own board and stuff.
As opposed to this policy?
Yeah, I think we're seeing a policy. I think the discussion was that this was more like guidelines than a policy.
And it, and it, I mean, things to change over the years and how, what's, what kind of things we're having to deal with, change and stuff. So, um, some of these codes of conduct or, you know, board rules or whatever you want to call them are, are flexible enough. That we could change them to this stuff.
Thanks, Sean. Sure. Next one up was one I sent you late on Friday. Uh, I apologize for getting that out late. I forgot to put it in the original email. But public participation at board meetings, this is just a policy that has come up. Um, I've actually started taking a look at some of the policies that are updates from Erie One. And they do add some language regarding this. I haven't compared the scope with respect to what we have. Um, I think this has been, this 3220 has been reviewed by numerous people and our attorneys. It's kind of here now as, see if you have any questions, but we'll still need to bring that one back as a separate first read. So that we can talk about it a little bit more. Yes.
Right, I missed it. Is there a residency requirement to be a provision of the floor?
Hasn't been.
We're talking about the policy, I'm not talking about.
In practice, we, we've had people that were. Were outside of residence.
Maybe that's something that we could.
This came up before, before. Yeah, it did. We have in, in some meetings actually let people that were not residents present and or.
Did we do something to stop that? Or we just like talked about it?
But this is an opportunity for a policy in place where it gets vetted out by our attorneys and everything else. Cause the problem is, is a trend going on nationally where.
Yeah, they're bringing in groups of people that just.
Exactly. Well, there's also trends going on within the community that organizations are coming in to. For lack of a better term, they're clogging up board meetings by coming to plug their stuff. And I would prefer not to have my time wasted.
Yeah.
The problem when you deal with corporations is then they have the opportunity to litigate if they're excluded in the policy otherwise. So I wouldn't like to see the feasibility of having that added to our, um, approach before.
Yeah, I'd have to double check, but I, I think there is at least an allotment. So even if we make it strict regarding that, I think there's a provision that allows the board to kind of vote and, and allow people to.
Having a established policy.
No, I realize that our, it would be.
I, I think we have to have it as established policy.
Yeah, this is an opportunity, this is what we're doing this for. And let's say the environment is evolving.
Okay, so I, I will work on adding. I'll work on adding something about language about the residency and that'll be brought back as a first read and another meeting.
Thank you.
Public complaints, we just, I just deleted the anonymous, that was, uh, a discussion at one of the board meetings. 6211 recruitment, selection and hiring of professionals. That came up in our board meeting and one of the questions, I think it was from Lori about, um, what do we really need as policy? It's, there were a number of, these are guidelines kind of policies. And this one, once I contacted Erie One, they said they took that out years ago. So, I mean, we had, did have some discussion, most of these two still has a policy about that, I'm a sample. But then once I started talking to Erie One, they're like, you don't really need that. So if you're okay, we're, I'm going to leave that one out. Okay, um, and then entitlement to attend, that's really about residency. And just making sure that the determination is in writing. It kind of inferred it because it said it had to include written notice about something, but it didn't explicitly say that the notice, that it had to be in writing. Then, uh, graduation, uh, this was a question about participation of graduation with respect to discipline. I did talk to Erie One about this. There will also be from them, they noticed the same question. And we're including that in an update as well. So that is. Uh, rights of non custodial parents, we deleted the word elementary. Musical instruments, so this one was more, I don't want to say wholesale change, but there was a, a, a bit of change with respect to this one. Really to kind of reflect what we do, but also add some of what the questions revolved around with respect to. Hardship, rental fees, um, really eliminating the word qualified, which was in our old policy. Because now, 20 years later, that was interpreted by everyone to be something other than what it was intended back when it was written. Think I addressed all the questions that were in there. So I'm hoping that everybody's okay with what we have with respect to that one. Child abuse and malt treatment, uh, so this was a question from you Lori about changing the word promptly. To as soon as you suspect. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I saw you announce that the education system uses promptly.
Yeah, so it, 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 the way Erie One divides it, it's, it's the first section on mandated reporters and then what we have to do internally. So not affecting, there was the words, they use the word immediate, but then we have to do the internal stuff. And it doesn't quite work when you change it to as soon as you suspect. And the promptly kind of works better with, with in, in the, in the environment and that's SED guidance right now, so.
I think we skipped medication.
Oh, medication, yes, thank you. Uh, 7513, so this was, um. Doesn't get to some of your questions on 7521. That was one of the policies that we're going to have to do some more work on. Right now, this change only, uh, well, it adds language regarding having feminine hygiene products in the nurse's office at the elementary level. That was a, a request during the board, during the meeting. We already did do that, now it just normalizes it. So that there's, so that those are kept there for an emergency basis at the elementary schools. Gender identity, um, hopefully I answered your question with respect to somebody question.
Yeah.
Sorry, the LB and LS, I forget who does one. So when I researched that, all I could find was that. The unofficial records could be whatever name. The, the student chooses to use. That's the position of the ACLU. I don't want to get in a, in a, in a fight over that when really it's districts. Some districts may be going a little too far and saying, we're not going to let you use that name and you have to use your legal name. There's no law that requires the legal name in an unofficial record. Something even ACLU acknowledges that for an official record, maybe a transcript, something with some legal weight to it. There's gonna be that legal name being put on those documents. So adding the word yearbook and kind of leaving it open to unofficial records. Kind of gives us a little leeway so that it can apply to the ID card, the yearbook and, and.
Right, I wanted all those things that were actually unofficial, because they are records for students to be able to use. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think the other part of your question was, uh, parent permission. I don't think that would fit quite with what the ACLU's position is. Because if we have to ask the parent permit for permission, we're essentially outing the student to the parent. And then that violates the student's privacy. So the layers that should play into that, just I think would prohibit, and it would prohibit that. And just the way we, I think the way this policy works.
I like the addition.
Um, and then the safety conditions and prevention instruction was just a quick modification to remove the word premarital. And it was a little antiquated language, which we've updated so that all kind of fits together. So that's all of the policies that I put in front of you. We do have some, I think as I indicated in my email, we do have some policies that we do require, need some additional work on. That are going to have to come back at a future date. Because we have, as part of this process, the board is going to have to act to rescind policies the board does not want anymore. Adopt revisions, adopt new policies. Very clear when we get to that meeting, what is exactly happening, what we're getting rid of. So because we have a couple of policies out there that we need to, I've got one, two. Bonchonik, uh, we have more research to do and talk to our medical director regarding 7521, which was your, your question about the.
The emergency.
The emergency, it's really about, you know, the effes on one side of the museum and the people are on the other side of the museum. When I talk with Mr. O'Connor, we can solve that with a, probably solve that with a field trip procedure. Which we have some procedures in place, but we still want to talk with our medical director to make sure that we're, everybody's on the same page with that. So we will be bringing those back to you as well, so.
I just want to clarify for graduation, the 7221 there, um, there was new language. The proposed language, is that going to be the, is there different, is there another review coming from Erie One bosses? Or was that their proposed changes?
I have not. Yes, I, I just, I, I put that in as an exception to make sure that if there is discipline in place, which excludes the student from the privilege of graduation. It's kind of covered. If we, if I find that there's something else that we need to modify, I have not seen Erie One's language yet. But if so, we can bring that back as part of the manual. So essentially the manual will be only those policies that everybody has given us a, a, a yes or has not. To move forward on. Everything else, we're going to have to discuss or work on the updates from Erie One.
Right, now the old policies will be in place, even on those policies that we are.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure we had clarity around next steps. So like Jonathan said, you'll, you'll approve which policies we're deleting or rescinding. You're approving which policies that we've made changes to, and then there's a number that we're still working on. Those old policies will stay as is until our revisions are confirmed and then we adopt those.
Are we formally adopting that, those old revisions? Then when we, because we're voting on it as a whole package. That was the part that always kept throwing me off. Is so, you know, if we have an old policy that was voted back in 2000, whatever, you know what I mean, a long time ago. I don't want to vote to confirm a policy that we know we're in the process of changing in a new manual. To then, see what I'm saying? I only want to vote on the policy change.
Yeah, I was going to say the manual that we should approve is just all the updates.
It's all the updates. If we, if we have a list of deletions, revisions and adoptions. And there's still six policies out here that we're not touching.
Those still stand, but we're not voting on.
Those would still stand, like our field trip procedures. We talked about the field trip procedures. As maintaining it the way it is now until we can work with council and come up with additional revisions in the future. So the existing policy stays in place.
Stays in place, but we don't vote to.
Yeah, I, you don't, I can keep those out, so you don't have to vote on.
I don't want a new revised date to be 2022.
Right, right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the old policy stays as is until we formally adopt the revised policy.
I just, you know what I'm saying? Oh, they've updated this in 2022 and we're all like, no, no, no. Like, you know, but.
But I wanted to make sure that we had clarity, because I think that there was lack of clarity at the meeting.
Alright, alright, so I'm working with Erie One, they're working on pulling all those policies together into the manual. They have given me a large packet of updates, very large packet of updates, some of which we've already kind of touched on. We did use the newer title line policy, so we may not have a lot to work on and that's. So there's stuff that we can work on. I'm going to work with Ms. Swan on figuring out the best path through those updates. And getting the manual in front of you. If we approve and we make all those other revisions, then Marcy can start working on getting those uploaded to the district website. And figure out that process, because that's going to take some time too. Just, it's going to be cumbersome, so, alright.
So we're looking for your approval to, uh, adopt the 2223 levy. And corresponding tax rates. Hopefully the memo is sufficient in addition to the prior communication, but big picture assessments were up in large part because of what's happening with the Amazon facility gates. Just want to make the statement that remember in the next year, that's going to come off the books, so you're going to see. If not a large increase, it's going to be very difficult to determine the change in assessments there. Because the assessments were greater, that increased the tax rates. And once you prove that in August, I will come forward with a tax warrant. Not approving a tax warrant because there's some things that the county has to do, uh, so that we can ensure the actual proper amount for collection. Open the floor to any questions.
Right, then can I have a motion to establish a tax line? Like, second, Lori, all in favor?
Right, just one follow up question out about this, uh, Manta Road, Ridge Road, you go north. Behind the Sports Dome on the left there, there're buildings up there, right?
Yes, they are.
Manta Road, go Ridge Road, going north.
Yeah.
Passed by the bubble. Right, and the left there, they're. What is that, do you know? That's why I don't know, I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry, else I got my. Yeah.
Alright, cool. Alright, meeting evaluation. We're an hour and fifteen minutes ahead of schedule, so. All good, alright, uh, I do need.
I make a motion that we convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person.
Can I have a second? David, all in favor?